To order the City of Sagatuck's city council meeting for Monday, August 26th, if you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Here, Baldwin.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Moxie.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
White.
Here.
All right, so on to Mayor's comments for tonight. First of all, I know you've seen some of the communication from Douglas officials, but I wanted everyone to be aware that on September 16th at 7:00 PM, they'll be honoring those amazing humans who jumped into action to save a man's life who had a medical emergency and whose truck ended up in the Kalamazoo River. Douglas Police responded and therefore they're doing a commendation ceremony. On a personal note, I am so very proud that two of them were employees of mine and two were two very good friends of mine, Amy Shanahan and Mike O'Brien, Max Clem and Austin Wakis are employees of mine, and they all jumped into action and they truly were heroes that day. But we really hope that you will join us all on September 16th for that award ceremony. Speaking of Douglas, we did have some disappointing news that just came out that we won't be doing the Labor Day Bridge Walk this year between the two communities. Unfortunately, circumstances out of the City of Sagatuck's hands led to the event being put on pause this year, and we hope to have it back next year. So, we were really sad to hear about it, and I know there was a lot of talk online, but they were definitely some circumstances that were out of our control. Let's see, on a more positive note, we had State Representative Rachel Hood and State Representative Joey Andrews in town last week. They chose Oval Beach to introduce two pieces of legislation aimed at protecting our state's critical dunes. If you have an opportunity, please read more about their bills and what it would mean to our area and also to the state of Michigan. And then finally, Sagatuck students, they go back to school tomorrow, and with that, many, many businesses in town are short-staffed. So between the college students going back and the high school students going back, just have some patience with a lot of the businesses out there. I know they're reducing a lot of hours, reducing the amount of tables they have, and it's all because all of our students have gone back to school. But with that being said, it's an exciting year for Sagatuck students. Go Trail Blazers, first football game is Thursday. We already have started soccer and a lot of other sports that are going on and some really fun activities that our school is taking part in. So be on the lookout for all of those drivers out there. Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Just a few updates, other than items that are in my manager's report, to you as a council. Today, our staff are working really hard on doing a mailing to all water customers within the city. This information was also sent to the email addresses that are on file as well. So essentially, that lead service line verification project that we have, where we received grand dollars from Eagle. One of the pieces of that is trying to determine the material that enters the home as well. And so we're sending out notice to all water customers with a request for their help to help us determine material as it enters their home. And then we'll be working on a specific targeted notice, the more specific individuals that are going to have some verifications occurring outside of their property as well, so that'll be forthcoming as well. But all of you should start seeing these show up in your email box and your mailbox soon. If you have any questions, I can certainly contact our city engineer, John Moxie, or myself, be happy to help folks out with any questions they have. We're certainly, there's certainly a lot of signage around town with varying views, and we're gonna see, I think, probably more of that as we, you know, approach November. And I just want to, you know, remind folks that certainly you can have signage within your yard. We just want to make sure that it's on your private property. So we're starting to see some signs pop up in the city right-of-way, particularly between the sidewalk and the street. And then that area, for the most part, is typically gonna be city right-of-way. And so you just need to make sure and have that, those signs on your private property, and no problem there. Otherwise, if folks have it between the sidewalk and the road, we'll start reaching out with some violation notices and that sort of thing. Want to thank your Convention and Visitors Bureau for helping us out last week on a project that really is long overdue, the rainbow sidewalk between Scooter's Pizza and the SCA. Ashley Seablink and Lisa Myers actually took time out of their day and repainted that last week, which they said they thoroughly enjoyed getting out of the office and being part of beautifying the community. But I really want to extend a big thank you to them. And then the last update, I know there's been some different inquiries that we've been receiving around deer and concerns that folks have with deer management. Douglas manager and township manager and myself have had some discussions about that, and Douglas has proposed, and the township, and I at least, believe that it's a good idea to form kind of a wildlife management committee that would compose representatives from each of the tri-community and some other interested individuals as well. So more to come at your September 4 workshop on that. And I know Douglas is working on bringing it forth on their agendas as well, so.
Okay, all right. Any agenda changes or deletions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I ask that we move 9E Parks and Public Works Committee out of the consent agenda into new business. That was not presented to the council at our workshop for discussion, which is the normal practice, nor was there any application materials that were included in the packet for discussion and review.
Ryan, do you want to address that one?
At this point, it sounds like the council member Gardner would like to move it to new business to have a little further discussion on it. I don't have any concern with that from a staff perspective. If we miss putting the application materials in the packet, that's on us as staff, so.
I just didn't know if we had it in, we didn't have it in the workshop?
No, we did not. We did not, and again, that's kind of aligns with the practice of not bringing every item to your workshop. I don't know, unless there's a council preference to have, you know, board and commission members discuss that workshop, which we're happy to do. Just didn't, with one applicant, see a need to bring it to your workshop meeting, but discussion here seems inappropriate.
As the Chair of the PPW, I'd like to speak, is that there was one applicant in one...
Is it ready for comment, or do we need a second first?
I don't know, was it a motion? Okay.
They gave me the motion, yep.
Then do we need a second?
Yeah, I'll go ahead in second.
Okay, so on to discussion.
I'm happy to talk about it in general, but the point is that there was one applicant, one position, and we interviewed them, the mayor, the manager, and I as the Chair interviewed this individual and thought them qualified. I don't think it's necessary to move it into our agenda.
Okay, any other discussion?
Because I was surprised by it myself. I would think that anybody for a committee, any committee that we serve, would be up for discussion about the interview process, about how many people applied, how long they waited for people to apply for it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just confused because we have gone through, you know, this has gone on with all the different people who have applied for positions, and we interview them, and then it comes before you. There was one applicant.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I had asked previously that any new appointments be put into new businesses opposed to consent agendas for the reasons that we're mentioning, for discussion and questions that we may have about the process.
Any other discussion? Okay, so the motion is on the table. If you could do a roll call vote on that? Okay, it's a voice vote?
I'll actually jump in here really quickly. So with consent agendas, there doesn't need to be a roll call vote on removing something from the consent agenda. Under Roberts' rules, normally just one person's request to remove something from the consent agenda is all it requires to remove that. It's not the same thing as like amending the council's agenda.
Okay, so you're saying that it can be removed, and then we can do a consent agenda roll call for everything except for that one item?
That's accurate.
Okay, all right, so then we'll do that.
Thank you.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda without item 9E? Do I have a motion for that? Okay.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I was gonna make a motion to remove my motion from the table.
Okay, all right, that sounds good, thank you. Okay, we'll go back to that then when it comes to the consent agenda, and we'll just deal with that once we get to that item. Thank you, Jamie. All right, so then we will go on. We do not have any guest speakers at this time, so we can go on to public comment on agenda items only. If anyone in the room would like to come to the podium and give us your first and last name and where you live.
Ethan Barty, 584 Lake Street, property owner in the city and the township. I've spoken many, many, many times here in the last year and a half. Of course, against the caps and all the harm that I believe it will do, and not only me, but many others. Sorry if some of this were predatory, but, you know, I believe a majority of the council refuses to listen to the many experts that have spoken up over the last year and a half. Think it's been, I know what's gonna happen tonight. I've known for the last year how this vote's gonna go, even before the task force was done. The council refuses to listen to, you know, get an economic study, get real data, make informed decisions. Instead, they make it clear that, you know, they run for office on one item, and that's why they ran. Personal agenda to me. Council also refuses to go with recommendations of task force concerning caps, refuses to listen to many appraisers, professionals, not just one, many, and what it'll do to property values, refuses to listen to the city business owners, refuses to listen to the generational families that will potentially lose their properties after several generations, refuses to listen to the real estate experts that they say are greedy. Sorry, that real estate expert's gonna sell that house that's a million dollars? They're gonna sell it for 800. They're still gonna make a sale on $800,000. It's the property owner that the real estate agents are trying to protect because it's the property owner that's gonna lose their rights and lose their money. And now they refuse to listen to the West Michigan Association Realtors, which is in your packet tonight, represent all of West Michigan on how wrong this is and how it violates property rights. They refuse to listen to its own CBB, who works tirelessly to attract people to our town. Last meeting, I heard Councilmember Anderson say that the hill was unlivable. I wasn't at that meeting, sorry, I re-watched it. Immediately after, Councilmember Dean said how he was looking out his window, watching his daughter play, watched the tourists walk by, and admired his flowers and how wonderful it was. So which is it?
The former.
It is so unlivable when a management company asks to see what the issues are for the summer, which I heard was 11, I don't know. They tell you to fill out a FOIA. In the public hearing, 99% of the people spoke against the caps, maybe more, I don't know. Majority of the council doesn't care what the people in the town take, care, want. There was a formality, that whole public hearing, just a formality. They only want to hear what they want and their personal agendas. Mayor Stanton said, and I quote, "I have dozens and dozens of emails in support of caps." Well, I sent an email in, it got published. Why were all these emails in the meetings?
Thank you, Ethan.
I would ask you to send those to me at info@quaintcottages.com if there really are.
Okay, all right, anyone else in the audience? Feel free to come up to the podium.
Peterson, 742 Pleasant Street, Sagatuck. Madam Mayor, council members, I also know you're gonna listen to it. In fact, one of the previous meetings, Councilmember Baldwin actually laughed when a gentleman said that this would threaten his livelihood. And when she was called out by her peers, she basically said, "Deal with it." We've gone through the eye-rolling, the smirks, the shakings of the head, especially with the lady that bought the house on the hill and said now she might not be able to afford it. The gentleman whose cottage they've had for generations, and his daughter, if she does inherit it, won't be able to keep it because she won't be able to pay the taxes unless they can short-term rental. We've heard about the unlivable conditions on the hill. If that's truth, show us the complaints, show us the police report, show us the fines. We've heard about the dozens of emails, they should all be published then because that's city communication. And you've worked on this for two years. Well, up until June, it was 90% opposition because your task force said no. Planning Commission didn't remove it, put it forward. In fact, the vote on the moratorium was no. So it's just lately that it's become something positive. And the result is, or the communists, "If you don't like it, don't vote for me." Well, let's hold off until November. If there's no rush, if nothing's gonna change, like you say it isn't, then let's wait until November. There's a voting bloc of four members who want to change the dynamic of our town. They're on a mission to change the Sagatuck we love. Took off parking on the hill with no alternative plan. You're gonna remove half the STRs, the airport property. You negotiated behind closed doors for property that's worth over a million dollars with no political input. And against my dear friend Glenna, who chastised me because I didn't know about the public meeting, 14 people showed up, and they were all trail people. And then the worst thing that you've done is you've passed an ordinance to allow condos on the riverfront, something that appalled Sagatuck so much years ago, they created the historic district for that. Not only have you're allowing condos on the waterfront, but you're also giving them residential on the first floor, which means they can close the boardwalk. Why'd you move here? Why do you live here? You've lost your connection to Sagatuck, or maybe you never had it. So you're gonna sit pass it. I look forward then about my certificate, and I pull up 99.61, "Suspension and Revocation of License, Section C. The city council's decision shall be final and binding upon the license holder." I'm certainly hoping you won't be punitive, like you were with Christina Wex or Mary at that monkey, Big Monkey, but there's no appeal process. Right now, you can come in and take away my certificate, and I have nothing that I can do about it. You need to create an appeal process, give it to somebody like the Zoning Board of Appeals, and let them be the final determiners of our livelihoods.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
My name is John Thomas. I live at 141 West Street, in the heart of the R1 District, surrounded by short-term rentals. I should also mention that for the last 31 years, I have derived my income from our tourist-based economy, and I hope to continue to do that for many more years. Over the past several months, I've followed the deliberation about short-term rentals closely. I provided my perspective in writing to the task force, the commission, and the council, explaining why I favor a higher level of regulation of short-term rentals. I won't repeat all of that tonight, but I will repeat the most important part of that. From the beginning, I encouraged the decision-makers to strive for a win-win compromise solution that would respect the concerns of people on all sides without being swayed by people looking for a winner-take-all solution. And I think that what has been proposed does that. I think it's a win-win compromise position. So tonight, I'm here to thank all of those who worked so hard over the past months to craft what I believe is a win-win solution that I'm comfortable endorsing. Please accept my appreciation and thanks for your hard work and for your service to the community.
Anyone else?
Hi there, Tim Straker, Culver Street, Sagatuck. I don't think there's too much new you're going to hear for or against this issue tonight, but as you finalize the language on the caps, I'd just like to thank you for two things. First, whether any of you or each of you voted for or against the caps, I appreciate each of you leaning in and trying to understand the issue from all sides. There's a lot of really negative conversations taking place in this town centered on old guard and new guard, and statements like, "We'll see about this at election time." I know I won't agree with every decision you make, but that's life and that's politics. So I won't be one of those people voting for you or against you because you voted for or against these caps. I'll be voting for your ability to listen, to have constructive dialogue, to think critically about the challenges facing our community, not for how you voted on one issue. Secondly, I'd like to thank you for your strength in not letting a few vocal consistently negative residents and business owners continue their unrestrained animosity towards you. As tonight's agenda shows, there are other issues like roads and infrastructure that also need your diligent attention. Please don't let the people making a weekly run to next-day signs distract you from other important work going on in our community. Thanks for all you do, it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Good evening, Glenna DeYoung, Sagatuck Township. Earlier this year, Marsha and I made the hard decision to move from Sagatuck to Sagatuck Township. It was tough because we loved our home and our neighbors, but STRs were encroaching, and ultimately, this fact is the con, in the cons column when assessing whether to stay or leave, tipped our decision to leaving. We sold our home to an out-of-state buyer who plans to move here full-time, demonstrating that there is a market here for non-STRs. Sagatuck businesses have thrived, as John just mentioned. He's a business owner, even before the 38% STR prop, percent of properties in our town, in this town. Concentrating on parks, trails, and conservation is what will increase destination tourism to our area. I'm saddened by the vitriol, personal bashing, and attempts to trash local businesses over this issue. Please believe that the data collected shows 60% of Sagatuck residents and voters support caps. Thank you for listening to our residences, our residents. Thank you for staying the course, doing your due diligence, and keeping your heads high. As always, be a duck and let the negative words roll off your back like water. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Go ahead, Bobby.
Bobby Gant, good evening. What Tim said and what Glenna said, yay. Bob and I bought our first home here in 1991 and moved to Sagatuck full-time in 2000. I currently live on the hill at 341 Main Street, where I have resided for 10 years. In the spirit of full disclosure, first, I've been a member of the Planning Commission since 2021 and voted yes in favor of the STR cap and the proposed ordinance language that is in front of city council this evening. Second, while I've experienced, like many of my neighbors, annoying behaviors affecting the quality of life as a result of the number of short-term rentals on the hill, it became annoying to the extreme when I experienced an early morning attempted break-in to my home a few weeks ago by a visitor who, with friends and family, were renting a house that is situated behind my own, forcing me to call 911. Ordinance 154.026 R-1, Community Residential District, which is what the hill is considered to be, reads in part, "One, this district is designed to protect and promote low-density, single-family residential uses and development in the city. Two, the purpose of the district is to preserve the residential character of the district and to provide mechanisms for orderly development in undeveloped areas. Three, residential land use is the only use that will be permitted or encouraged in the district. And yes, short-term rental units are permitted use, but only in the context of the general provisions of low density. In 2017, there were a total of 104 short-term rental citywide. Today, there are at least 278 STR citywide, 167% increase in seven years. And of the total of 278 today, there are 123 STRs on the hill. What these numbers mean is that 44.2% of all STRs in the city are on the hill. Furthermore, 37% of all residences on the hill are short-term rentals. Low density, I think not. Again, the ordinance states that the R1 District is designed to protect and promote low-density, single-family uses, and to preserve the residential character of the district. How does one reconcile low-density, single-family uses with 37% of all residences on the hill being short-term rentals, often accommodating more than one family? Are these not really commercial enterprises parading as a single-family residence? I respect and appreciate the challenges that you continue to face in this decision. I truly do. However, as challenging as it is, you each took an oath to uphold our regulations and enforce the city ordinances. I'm asking you to take two actions. Protect and promote low-density, single-family residential uses and observe the residential character of the city's R1 residential districts by adopting the ordinance language that is before you and whatever ordinance is on the books, please enforce it. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Hi, Nancy Kimball, 550 Spear Street. And I did cut my comments down because you've all heard from me so many times on this issue. But I wanted to just note that, as many people have already said, many of our neighborhoods now have STRs in the upper 30% range, some higher. These are no longer pleasant residential neighbors, neighborhoods. They are mixed-use spaces that combine businesses because that's what STRs are with residential homes. Until the council showed support for the STR caps at the July 8th meeting, my husband and I regretted our decision to retire to Sagatuck. We were confident that as more people recognized the issues with STRs as your neighbors, fewer and fewer people would consider making their home here. We all agree this is a very special place. We have natural beauty, a vibrant and charming business district, magnificent institutions. The SCA and the History Center are just two examples. All these things combined to make Sagatuck a very special place. It takes committed citizens to build and maintain such a community. These citizens need a place to live. Converting our housing stock to businesses does not build a community. It undermines that goal. Simply said, we don't need more tourists, we need more residents. When the council courageously voted on July 8th for staff to draft the resolution limiting STRs, I for one was ecstatic. I will end my comments by simply saying thank you to our local leaders for listening to residents and living up to your responsibility to do what is best for our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Anyone else in the room? Okay, I'll move to online. If anyone, I'm sorry, you can feel free to come on up, yeah.
Godfrey, Sagatuck, up on the hill. This is so simple, and I am so grateful that you, the Planning Commission, everyone involved in studying it, looking at it, the task force, and here we are. This is just a simple reset, a rebalancing of something that just tipped right over. And I think if we'd gotten to it earlier, we wouldn't have this fierce debate that we've all had to be part of. And I'm sure a lot of it's been difficult to listen to. But you're doing the right thing, history is on our side. We have to preserve this community, and I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. All right, come on up.
Sherry Tidalde, longtime resident. I live on North Street, and I am very upset with the way Helen treated someone speaking about short-term rentals. You are the mayor, it is your job to make sure that some disciplinary action happens. And Helen, you talked about, you've been working on this for two years. You've been bullying people, in my opinion, for two years. We've been pushing back, and you call, you call us names. I for one don't want to live in a community like this. If, you shouldn't be on that side of the table. Yeah, that's about it for now. That's disrespectful and shouldn't be happening.
All right, Sherry, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to everyone who's online who might want to raise their hand. If you show your hand, I can acknowledge you. Anyone online wishing to speak? Go ahead, Jane.
I always have my hand up.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Jane Underwood, 130 Perryman Street. I feel sorry for the people on council who are being attacked, people on the Planning Commission. But, you know, democracy is messy, but it works. We've been dealing with this problem for a long time. I became interested in doing something about it when I saw the shrinking enrollment in our public schools. And not one senior from Sagatuck graduated this year. Very few students from Sagatuck. And I can remember when there were a lot of kids in Sagatuck who went to the school. Now, as I said, democracy is messy, and we have all... And we have an election coming up in November. The League of Women Voters has sent out information to the incumbents and the challengers. We will be having a league forum at Sagatuck High School on the 17th of September. You can already go online and leave messages for people. We will keep it respectful, no personal attacks. So let's discuss this at a league forum, and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Keith, if you can unmute yourself?
Sue?
Yeah. We can't hear you quite yet. You just have to unmute yourself.
Am I unmuted?
There it is. We can hear you.
All right, hold on. Let me get my camera back up here. All right. I'm going to defend-
If you can just state your name and where you live.
That's right. I live in Sagatuck, Michigan, not the township. 541, I don't even know where I live. Main Street, Sagatuck, Michigan. I'm going to defend some council members here. I wrote this out today. There are two city council members who should be ashamed of themselves. Russ Gardner and Gregory Muncie. Instead of defending your fellow council members for their civic duty and doing their due diligence in relation to short-term rentals, you've stood by motionless while the owners of Kindle and Company have slandered your fellow council members. These gentlemen, by the way, live in a condo building in Holland that has caps on short-term rentals. It's totally hypocritical. They and a host of others have made personal attacks on your fellow council members and have publicly called for boycotts of locally-owned businesses, plus put signs in their windows and yards. Instead of calling them out on their lies and innuendos, you both have joined in and voiced your, voiced your own personal attacks. You have fed the flames of discord, division, and distrust that have bent the truth and told outright lies to suit your own agenda, which is to stop progress toward a future that promotes community and inclusiveness in our small town. Gregory, you have violated, clearly violated Section 4.9 of the City Charter, which states, "No member of the council or any board or commission of the city shall vote on any issue or matter in which he or a member of his family shall have a proprietary or financial interest or as the result of which he may receive or gain a financial benefit. The council board or commission member concerning shall not vote on such determination." In February of this year, I informed you of this section of the city's charter, and you clearly stated to me that you had no ethical violation because you stated you worked in a part-time position and it was not your primary source of income, so that you were not obligated to the ethical rules of the city charter. This gave you the leeway to voice your opinion and vote on issues that concerned short-term rentals. You only left your job at the short-term rental agency when you were informed, probably by the city attorney, that you were directly violating your oath of office, and you could no longer discuss the issue or vote on this issue. This allowed you, after you left your job, to continue voicing your opinion and vote on those issues. In this respect, you have done a huge disservice to your community. I ask you to recuse yourself from discussing and voting on this issue, immediately apologize for misleading the voting residents of Sagatuck, and resign your position as a council member. Thank you. Keith Cherick, Sagatuck, Michigan.
All right, Keith, thank you. Anyone else online with your hand raised? Anyone else? Do you see anyone, Jamie? Okay. Is there no one else in the room who wishes to speak? I will move on to our consent agenda, and Russ, if you wanted to address the consent agenda the way you wanted it worded?
I had made my motion earlier to have the item moved from 15, excuse me. Yeah, the item moved from 9E to 15F. That was it. And I made a motion which I-
So if you could, if you could have the motion be to approve the consent agenda by, but by moving item 9E?
Do we, do we need him? Do we need approval for that? That's not what I heard.
So all it takes to move something off the consent agenda is just a request. It doesn't even have to be a motion.
Okay. All right.
So, and that request just has to happen before the vote on the consent agenda.
Okay, so we've already moved it-
Russ, Russ has made that request at this point, so that can be moved, and then the remainder of the consent agenda can be-
All right, so then if anyone wants a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Okay, then it is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to our staff reports, boards, commissions, and committees, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to add other than my comments at the top of the meeting, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any on my report.
Any questions for the city manager?
Yes, I had a question.
Okay, go ahead, Gregory.
About the signs at the right of the way and this average on Douglas. I was just wondering about, you had talked about the deer management system. You know, I wanted to say that, you know, I've seen a lot of, you know, deers that are, you know, misfired. There's a lot of skinny ones out there this year. So I appreciate that movement going forward to that, forward with that. The, the signs in the right-of-way, it was that, were you talking about on the hill or the-
Yeah, I, I've seen them in various places as I've been traveling, so not, not particularly on the hill. These are throughout the city. There, there's various signs that are kind of popping up, and some of them are in the right-of-way, and we just want to make sure they're on private property.
Okay, that's all, that's all I got.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll move on to the treasurer's report. Anything to note?
There's any, Nikki's been hard at work getting up to speed, as you can see from her reports. And, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to bring any questions you have back to her and report back.
Any questions or discussion? All right, we'll move on to the city clerk's report. Jamie, anything that you wanted to highlight?
No, I don't.
Okay, any questions for the clerk? All right, we'll move on to planning and zoning.
Next month, Luca is going to take over the, the planning and zoning reporting as he's getting more and more up to speed, and I, I've talked with him, and the typical planning and zoning casework report that you all were used to for quite a while will be returning, so.
Okay, great. DPW, I believe Scott is here. Anything you want to highlight, Scott? Any questions for Scott? Okay, moving on to the sheriff's department is-
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. All right, we will move on to the engineer's report. And John Loxey, anything to report?
Nothing new outside of his reports.
Okay, great. All right, we will move on to boards, commissions, and committees. Fire District Administration Board, Dan?
Thank you, Dan Fox, council representative to the Fire District Administrative Board. Highlights from the Fire District Board meeting on the 19th of August. There is, in your packet, are in your packets, charts from page 43 to 49. Feel free to respond to any of those if you like. As a, at the, as a bit of a highlight, the number of incidents, the increase in the number of incidents, number of calls to the Fire District continues to be dramatic at like 18 to 20% year to year, and that's continuing into August as far as we've been able to see so far. And the number of multiple calls at the same time. I know people think there are 30 people inside that firehouse at any given point. That's not the case. They paid-on-call. We live with paid-on-call. Those people have to come in, and anyway, it's a challenge. It's a challenge. I thought you might be interested in the life numbers, the life EMS response numbers, as that's our, that's the first detailed report we have. And so you've only got really two months of, of life's numbers. The, the time, whatever it is, 13-ish minutes or whatever, it's on one of the other charts, their average number, you need to understand that that's for the ambulance. That is not included in the response times for the Fire District. On an ambulance call or a call for help for a heart palpitation or whatever, that sort of thing. The Fire District sends EMTs immediately. Those, that response is included in our average response time. The department's average, average response time, which is in seven minutes as it currently stands, probably. It may, that's higher than we'd, a little higher than we have had traditionally and higher than we'd like. Depending on the number of calls that come from the peninsula where the times are going to be extended somewhat. We're hoping that comes down, given that it's after the roundabout, but it may not come down, so FYI. There's also a map in there showing you where the calls take place. The red ones are the top priority calls, green ones less so. For confidentiality, patient confidentiality, personal confidentiality addresses do not get released. So, but you can see they're basically in the district grouped in the two communities, in the two cities primarily. And again, response times include those times all the way out Kalamazoo River and whatever. That's, that's a long trip. And I, I think I told you last time, we have situated at the firehouse now for, I think it's eight hours, and I think five days a week, the ambulance is located there. That can change at any point in time. So if you go by the firehouse and the ambulance is not there, they're, they're on a call, period. So, but that's, life has a wonderful and amazing, amazingly detailed and sophisticated way of positioning their resources throughout all of their areas, repositioning them based on expected demand. And that's where units go. That, that the, that they've made that move to be at the station, at the fire station, is encouraging for a whole bunch of reasons, but not least of all because it also says their business is responsive in, or this area is responsive for their business. They are a for-profit company. So it's important that they get their deal on it as well. So, if there are any, no questions, any questions on the charts?
Yeah.
I'll go on just briefly. Also included at the Fire Board meeting, at some point will be coming to the city, I don't know, through the DPW or maybe to Ryan, with a formal request to have, because, well, it's tempting to think those fire, fire hydrants are the Fire District's property. They are not. They're the city's property. City infrastructure, city asset, obviously for use by the Fire District. And I think I mentioned last time, there are different levels of flow in different hydrants. That's tested and gets established. Having, having the advanced knowledge in the, in the people responding to a fire call as to what the character of the flow of the nearest hydrant is, is, is important. Because if you hook up to one that does not have, whether it's a low flow, you then have to, you pull off of that and you go to the next one. Well, you lose time and somebody's in, in a situation. So anyway, there are, there are bans, plastic bans that are going to get presented to the cities, all three jurisdictions, to ban, surrounds the connection on the fire hydrant. Three colors, I think three colors, blue, green, red, whatever this, identifying quickly visually how, how powerful the, the flow from a given hydrant is. That's an enhancement for safety's sake. I don't think the things cost more than five or six bucks a piece, so it's not like we're talking, you know, Cadillac kind of numbers, but whatever. Also, these, just a quick update, the schools, the schools approached the Fire District because the schools, it's a, it's a major concern for, really for the community that there is radio connections to the various school properties. They came to the Fire District because whichever system they have, and I don't have the numbers in my head, they have difficulty connecting iRADIO to their buses as the buses made their routes. The answer to that, a potential answer to that, was to use, to come to the Fire District, ask to use the antenna that's at the fire station, and right now is unused because the Fire District switched to a different sort of radio system some years ago. They can go up on a, put their receiver, whatever it is up there, and reach their, their, their buses. So they asked for that. The Fire Board approved that. In response, also adding, the Fire Board would like these, the school systems' cooperation as best as possible for the use of those buses for blocking purposes at parades, public events, Fourth of July, Labor Day, bridge walks, that sort of thing. So hopefully, one hand can wash the other. And finally, I'm not sure if, I don't, I don't know if, how public this was made. There's been a, well, you probably know about it, but the, I think probably four or five days ago at the most, the setup for the blockade or barricade situation at Ferry Street where the sinkhole is. At the, at the time, it had the three-level barricades on both, on both ends. The issue for the Fire District was getting the emergency vehicles across that as quickly as possible. The challenge was trying to move, moving those barricade, or those barricades, they're like hinged or pivoted here, 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 and at the bottom. So they literally do this when you're trying, you know, when you're trying to move. You've got a fire truck stopped, got a movement on this end, got to go, move on the other end, got to go. They wanted to place the cones back, whatever. So it was not an ideal situation. I mean, the road was closed, which was good, but... So, working with the, actually a wonderful collective group of people in the Fire District, DPW, I don't know, Scott, have you guys run on or not? They came up with a situation or a redo of that. So that now there are three barricades. They were purchased by the Fire District at the Fire District's expense that have those signs mounted on them, but the whole thing is stable as can be. They're on wheels, connected at one end to a fixed post. And the one on the, the farthest south one, so the first one you would, you would have come up against, has a combination lock on it, a combination given only the police and, and the emergency services and what have you. So they can get through there quickly. Much more, I mean, believed to be as much as three or four minutes, which may not sound like a lot of minutes, but if you're, if that's the big one you're having, that's a lot of time. So, I mean, really, kudos to the Douglas DPW. They helped, they actually put the things together. And to the Fire District that went up to Tractor Supply and bought them, bought all the bits and pieces and wheels and what have you. So I thought there was a pleasant deal. Now, Chief is quick to point out that come, when they start digging that up, when they, where nothing gets passed over, over that, and that's going to create its own problem. So he plans to come to the Fire Board for authorization for costs related to housing three to four personnel on that side of the river. There is a bit of a challenge as we get into the winter months because the trucks can't sit outside. I mean, trucks have hundreds, in some cases thousands, of gallons of water inside them that will freeze. So we're trying to figure out how to deal with that. But it, but some of the trucks don't. I mean, the EMT trucks, for example, don't have tons of water in them. I mean, they're, you know, sit outside like your car can sit outside. So I would guess, I'm speaking a little bit out of turn, but I mean, I would guess that at minimum, those vehicles and the people involved could be located at one of the, you know, off-season hotel operations over there during the, during that time of the year when that, the only other way to get there is going to be the way- operations over there during the, during that time of the year, when that, the only other way to get there is going to be the way you guys, you know, the fire trucks will have to go the way, you know, around through Shorewood, which is a nightmare.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Jan.
We'll move on to the inner urban board, Gregory.
Um, our riders have been very excited that we've extended our shuttle hours on Friday and Saturday by two hours. We're open till eleven now on the weekends and allows Interurban to return them to the high school after dinner. Uh, we've, uh, community engagement, we drove vendors for both art fairs, music in the park, and then also an event at OXPO. We purchased handheld radios for onsite dispatch. And Becky was able to work with Scott from the DPW, thank you Scott, to securing five parking spots for the Interurban as we shuttled people from the beer tent at Venetian Weekend, and it really worked out great. Becky, Becky was right there with her, with her walkie-talkie and was able to get to the dispatch. And, and we just had buses kept running. It was the smoothest Venetian Weekend that we had at the Interurban in my six years of serving there. And she did a great job. Our ridership is starting to wean a little bit. I kept telling you about how these numbers were up so high the last few months, but they're still high. We had an increase of 3.52% this for July. That's 464 more passengers than last year. And again, uh, our Fridays, Saturdays, one to nine, Sundays, one to seven riders. They're using the park and call service when the free service isn't running. So, um, so they're getting the word somehow that they're able to call us when they can't do the, the different park and rides. Great news on our capital grant progress. We talked about, I know I talked about before, we were, we couldn't find quite a contractor due to the expansion that we wanted for the building and that we also had to have testing done to the grounds to make sure that they were safe for us to, to build out to. I believe we have found a contractor and we will be moving forward to expand our building. So we have more room for our employees. We're actually, we have two bathrooms now instead of one bathroom. And of course I'll keep you updated on all of that as we meet up. We also, Becky is doing a wonderful job, I want to say. She has, um, she's gotten praise from employees. I had Terry, one of our bus drivers who came into the flower shop specifically to tell me how much he enjoyed working with her. So it's been a great transition. She also met with our chief, fire chief Greg Janik to discuss possible Sagatuck employee shuttle service, which I remember we worked on many years ago with Saba and to have an employee service. And we did have it for a couple of years and it just wasn't being used as much to utilize. So, um, so hopefully, you know, I've, I'll be working with her and maybe seeing if there's some kind of solution we could think about next year so that we can get the word out. Maybe employees might want to give incentives to their employees to park there because you know as much as I do, as I've talked about, I live on Butler Street. And by the time nine thirty, ten o'clock rolls around, half of those parking places are by employees and owners. They've already taken those out. So it'd be great if folks would take advantage of that shuttle service. Other than that, things are going pretty good.
Great, thanks Gregory.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I have a question. So service to the west side of the river with the detour, how's that impacting?
It's been quite a challenge, but we've been getting through it. Of course, it's a lot longer for us to get to Oval Beach back and forth, but they've been handling very well. We also have, I think, three or four school students as well. So as we get into school, we'll have a challenge getting through there, but they've been working with it, allowing for extra time, letting folks know that we, they need to call us ahead. Of course, you can always, you can always reserve a bus. And I don't know if a lot of people know that, but you can always call Interurban and say, hey, pick me up at eight o'clock tomorrow morning and they'll be there. So, so that we do have a reserved service. So take advantage of that, especially if you're over there on that other side of the hill where it's hard to get to.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority. Hi Mark.
Good evening, everybody. Hello to members of the audience, Mark Becken, city representative to Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority. Reporting on our meeting from a week ago, August nineteenth, we had five action items. We approved a proposal from Eagle Services to clean the ferric chloride feed system to the two and $11,500. Ferric acid is a chemical that's used in the very important process of wastewater treatment. So when that doesn't work, people like, that Scott works with are not very happy with the results. So that system has to be maintained periodically. We purchased tens of thousands of gallons of ferric acid a year, and it's one of our largest cost, material costs out at the sewer authority. We accepted a proposal from Dixon Engineering for the inspection of the water systems reservoir. If you're unfamiliar with a million gallon reservoir that sits in, buried in the top of a dune just north of Mount Ballhead. That will be done by a remote control underwater drone, a little newer technology. We allocated $5,500 for this service. The last time that was looked at was in 2017 when the reservoir was taken out of service, completely drained, inspected, some repairs were done. At the same time, we added a new roof, some security fencing, painted the new reservoir and got it back in service. It took about two to three weeks. So that's an extended period. We pick a time, the manager picks a time when water consumption use is the lowest. And so we'll be functioning strictly on the wells at that time. It is a challenge and potential issue with fire protection, but, but it has to be done. And once you have, they recommend, Eagle recommends every, an inspection every five to 10 years. So we're right on schedule for that. We have a lift station, a sewer lift station in Douglas that is starting to settle and sink because it was constructed in a kind of a wet area. It's one of about almost 40 lift stations, I think, throughout our system. Uh, I don't know if you know what a lift station is, but it's where the wastewater gets dumped, fills up. Then there's an adjacent chamber next to it, which takes a pump and pumps it into the underground piping that ends up out at Cal Lake for treatment. So we're getting in, uh, some recommendations from engineers, how to, uh, to correct that because it can be a little bit of a dangerous situation. Those lift stations, a majority of them were put in over 50, about 50 years ago when the wastewater treatment system was installed in the two communities. So we might have some more of those, but those things are routinely inspected two, three times a week. So it's nothing that was a big surprise. But the authority board agreed to a agreement with Sagatuck Township converting how they, they charge their base rates for the water bills, which in fact, which in turnaround and impacts the authority's budget. They are converting from what, what are called REUs, residential equivalent units to MEUs, which is meter equivalent units, uh, at the recommendation of the authority. Sagatuck and Douglas has already approved that. We've given the township an extra year to convert that, but they've promised us that they're going to get it done yet this fall in time for our budget review, which is, which actually will start about the first of the year for the gut, uh, budget year, our budget year starts on March first. And the last item, we welcome Abby Bigford, Sagatuck Township Supervisor as a Sagatuck Township rep on the Kalamazoo Lakeshore and Water Authority. We welcomed her by appointing her vice chairman. The, the authority board has a chairman, Barry Johnson, representing the city of Sagatuck. Abby now the vice chair from Sagatuck Township. And Greg Freeman, it's a Douglas representative who is a secretary treasurer. We try to keep those positions, one from each constituent community. Just a couple of quick other notes on operational things that you may find important. I hate to bore you, but the ongoing generator project, it, it's, we're almost three years into it to tune about $400,000. We then installed two permanent full-time generators and purchased four portable generators. And we're about 90% completed, but they had very important project. Uh, we went through our annual water system sampling and presented the results to Eagle. This is where you, you test for contaminants in your, you know, your potable water, your drinking water. And, uh, the big concern is PFAS. We have only a very slight, slight detection, far below what's detectable by Eagle with the Douglas wells. Those wells are a little bit problematic because that's, uh, they also have a history of some other, excuse me, chemicals there. But anyways, that's, that's good news for the community. Uh, our water system and our, is, is very safe for public consumption. Uh, we're working with a company called Peerless Midwest. This is an important project to upgrade our, what we call our SCADA, S-C-A-D-A, or SCADA water monitoring system. But this is, is an electronic computerized system that allows, that's centralized out at the authority location. And it allows the operators at the plant to manage the wells and pump the water into the system that ends up at the reservoir. And based on history of usage, uh, needs, uh, these wells go on and off, you know, on a set, uh, uh, schedule, one to keep the maintenance down on them. And, uh, but just like any other technology, things may be upgraded. We will know what that is. It's not going to be inexpensive, but we are going to pursue that before we make a decision. At the same, at the same time, we'll also be looking at, uh, putting in security system at all our, our wells and out at the Cal Lake Authority also. Uh, the board acknowledged the manager and his staff. Uh, and this is a, I'd like to bring this to attention. When the accident occurred in Douglas and the power went out. So everything that, south on that side of the river, there was no power. Well, these sewer, uh, system doesn't work without power. Okay, the lift stations stop functioning. So when the lift stations stop functioning, they have a tendency to rise back up into people's homes, basements, et cetera. Our staff did a great job. There was a six-hour outage, which is, it's a pretty long run. So they have to take portable generators and just run around the system, hooking them up, drawing down those, those, you know, down to the, uh, where it's not going to result in backups. Then move on to another system, under another lift station. And so they did that with the problems with Ferry Street and everything, but there wasn't any report of any backup. So I think that was a pretty good accomplishment for our staff. Also, keep in mind that our, our authority is manned 24/7, 365 days a year. So if something like this happened in the middle of the night, and it has, we have a primary on-call and a backup on-call and then a rotating system if it gets needed after that. But rest assured, our system is always manned, sort of like the fire district. Okay, it's pretty critical infrastructure. It, excuse me, and the last thing I'd like to mention is that the water operating agreement that the authority board has been worked on, we have put together four drafts. We were tasked with that by the communities to come up with a proposed new water system agreement. That's been approved by the board after four, uh, drafts. It's now in the community, the community's hands. And I understand Sagatuck has appointed two council members, council members Baldwin and Gardner to serve with Ryan on this, a joint effort of the communities to review the, uh, the, view the water agreement, make some recommendations, adjustments, whatever. Barry Johnson and I like to offer our services to meet with this committee, maybe before or anytime during the process. We've got combined over 40 years serving on the Sewer and Water Authority Board. So, you know, if you want to ask us anything about our input, how we arrived at some of the things we did, I'd be glad to share that with you.
Sure, we can.
Yeah. And we can meet at, you know, whenever you guys are convenient, so.
Great.
Yeah, any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
No, but great job to the Cal Lake team with the power outage and everything. We just appreciate it so much. Yes, and please pass it along to the team.
We'll do that when you don't, when you don't hear any complaints. But usually it's just something that's kind of forgotten. And when a public service that's so key to the community is just kind of taken for granted, that's a good sign. And I always thought that that was a good sign for our staff out there, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. All right, moving on to the Cal Lake Harbor Authority, Logan.
Nothing to report, our next meeting is next month.
Okay, sounds good. Zoning Board of Appeals, anything scheduled?
Uh, they meet next month.
Okay, Historic District, Russ.
Uh, we are meeting Thursday, September 5th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, Planning Commission, Holly.
Yeah, meets September 19th.
Okay, Parks and Public Works.
Meet tomorrow morning, 10:00 AM, come and join us.
Madam Mayor, I've got a question. I read the meeting minutes with interest. I have a question for, um, House Member Baldwin. She said there's talk about putting together some sort of foundation that would be totally separate from a city thing. She'd like to do it separately for a reason they've talked about, their five-year parks plan. So I'm just curious, is there, I just would like to learn a bit, a little bit more about what, where the direction that is.
It wouldn't be even involved in the city. We've just, private citizens have talked about putting together a foundation if people wanted to donate money or something to send to parks or something that would be outside of municipality. We've just talked about that as private citizens, that's got nothing to do with the.
Okay, so it would not be under the auspices of the city.
No, 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 no.
Okay, so then I would also again ask that the city begin to seriously draft a donation policy to tie into these efforts. We really need some guidance on that.
It would be totally separate, yeah, but that would be.
And I think it's a great idea. So I would just suggest we start working on that.
Okay, all right, and moving on to the tri-community non-motorized trail.
Uh, nothing to report tonight.
All right, no request for payment. Um, moving on to item number 12, approval of accounts payable, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount that's presented of $602,485.62.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Helen.
Uh, any discussion?
I would just note that close to half a million dollars of that is a pass-through on the property taxes.
Okay, anyone else? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have no introduction of ordinances, no unfinished business. So we are on to new business, item 15A, Community Street and Boulevard Tree Planting Grant. Uh, this is on page 53 in your packet. Now Scott, you want to take this?
Sure. Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor. So Public Works got tipped off by city manager Cummins that Consumers Energy had a grant opportunity available. So we jumped on it. It's called the Community Street and Boulevard Tree Planting Grant. So Public Works, we put to, put forth an application. The purpose of the grant is really intended to fund projects that incorporate the balance between overhead utility lines and, and street tree planting, so they're often in conflict. So as long as we put forth an application that demonstrated, um, you know, proper varieties that would, um, in terms of placement around utility wires, they were willing to award us funding. And in our case, uh, the, the grant would award up to $3,000. We've been approved for the full amount. So part of the scope of the project, it will be planting of 15 trees. We've already sourced them. They've all been approved by consumers, they're in compliance with their grant application. Eric Morrow over at Great Lakes Ornamentals, if you don't know him, he's a great resource for learning about trees and he also carries a pretty good stock. So we've located the trees and with your approval, um, we'll, we'll get these in the ground in early November, first week of November. I think they have to be in the ground with a little bit of correspondence back to Consumers Energy by November 8th. So I'll take some photos after they're planted, um, just basically outlining that we planted them as the application, as the application outlined. A little reminder that the city of Sagatuck's been a tree city for, I think around 18 years at this point. So we do some pretty aggressive tree work. And as the department that actually trucks out all of the leaves from the city, I can attest that we have a very healthy and robust tree urban forest program. So, um, so yeah.
The sample motion is on page 53.
Now go ahead and make a motion to approve the Consumers Energy tree planting agreement and to authorize the clerk and mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions? All right. No discussion or questions. So we can do a roll call vote on this.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Scott, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Moving on to new business, item 15B, Metro Wireless Wi-Fi Proposal for Oval Beach. This is on page 59 of your packet. Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. About a month ago during your, your workshop meeting, staff brought forth a proposal from Metro Wireless to provide Wi-Fi at Oval Beach through using Starlink satellites. So we had a pretty robust discussion with the, the team from Metro Wireless. I informed you that this was something that was being evaluated or I invited the Convention and Visitors Bureau to surmise into that kind of evaluation with me as we looked at this. And since then, the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board has reviewed the proposal and was willing to fully fund the upfront capital costs to get this going at the tune of $15,000. So their vote is, their board has voted to authorize those funds. And then the service itself would be $698 a month for the next 36 months. This is by way of summary, the Wi-Fi service will provide an estimated 2,000 users with Wi-Fi calling capability and the ability to send messages, stream music, share photos and use the internet while at Oval Beach. They're going to set it up in a way that where folks can't necessarily, you know, stream video because that can be, they can be data hogs and bog down the system. But they're confident that the system will be able to support 2,000 users. Staff use can be prioritized. So we, we know, we want to make sure that our, our Oval Beach patrollers and folks at our information booths and our Oval Beach manager, we want to make sure that they can absolutely make those, those Wi-Fi calls if there's an emergency. So we can actually set it up to where staff have kind of a separate login and priority access at all times. The equipment itself is made for all weather conditions. This is commercial grade equipment. Some folks have Starlink on a residential basis. This is commercial grade, so it's made to withstand all, all different weather conditions. The equipment has been deployed in a variety of settings. So this is in large spaces such as golf courses and marinas and so wide open spaces similar to the Oval Beach area. And then once approved, the service can begin within three to four weeks. And so at the, the workshop meeting, you asked me to follow up on a few different items. One was to notify AT&amp;T as we're working still with them on the cellular project at Mount Bald Head. And you were updated at your workshop on that. So I did notify them. I did reach out to the Sheriff's Office and Fire Department to notify them of the, the work that's, what we were evaluating, both were supportive of giving this a shot and seeing how it, how it goes. The Sergeant Haas said that he has Starlink on a residential basis at home and thought it was, was, was good that we were trying this on a larger scale, a commercial scale. And then there was some discussion at the last meeting about the different kind of tower systems that are, are out there for, to notify emergency responders that, that help is needed that, that you'll see around various maybe college campuses and other beaches. So Grand Haven State Park, through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, which is a state-owned park, recently installed 12 of those towers at a cost of $570,000. So they're not cheap. There's also kind of aesthetic concerns that some folks, so that project have expressed. But just to kind of give you an idea of the cost comparison of what, what that project costs to provide an adequate number of, you know, towers compared to what we're looking at with this particular project. So you can kind of weigh some alternatives.
Okay, the sample motion is on page 60.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Metro Wireless Proposal Terms and Conditions for Wi-Fi at Oval Beach.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, at the workshop, I had raised some questions. A couple of points I want to make. One is this is a non-budgeted item. We did not plan for this. Number two, I also wonder if we've had a third party objectively look at this to see if this is going to, because ultimately what this, the issue, the problem that I believe we're trying to solve at the beach is solid, consistent communications for anybody that may need to dial 911 for an emergency. This presumably would do that, goes beyond that basic need. But I also question whether this actually will do that. And have we had a third party look at this? I'm not a telecommunications expert. I can read a great sales proposal, but technically is it going to solve the problem? Is it going to meet the needs that we've identified from a safety standpoint? I don't feel confident that we've done that. The other issue that I have is, it's, it's frankly, it's a bit of a, an appearance issue. These are going to be mounted on the top of the ticket booth, right?
So yeah, one will be on the, yeah, the entrance booth and then one on the concession booth.
Aesthetically, I think it's going to not add to the beach. The other thing that I think we should be doing is we should talk, there's other alternatives to this, to this, to this idea. And one is, which I brought up several times, is we should extend the hard line that we have at the beach. There's already a 911 phone that's on the north side of the concession stand. We could easily run a line down the beach, put up some communication towers, put some life rings, do some other things to encourage people, to show them that there's a safety measure out there. The landline's already there. It's a far less expensive proposition than this. And I, and I want to thank the CVB for agreeing to fund this to the $15,000. I think that was the one item I heard from every council member that that would be the key for moving forward with it. I just think this is a, a solution to a problem that is much simpler, much, much more simply solved. And again, we're going to be committed to a three-year agreement, which my understanding of the contract that was presented is that if we find another solution, if we run fiber out there or if we put up a monopole, which will allow co-location of other services, it will make this redundant. And then I think we'll still be, if I remember correctly, we're going to be financially on the hook for paying the company 75% I believe of the total contract. So I've got some concerns as well as, as, as the other, the other thing that comes to mind is, do we RFP this? Did, if we've identified this as being a potential solution to our problem, I bet there's some competitors to Metro that might be interested in the contract if we were to make them aware that we had actually been interested in getting this proposal. Those are my, those are my thoughts.
Ryan, do you want to address any of those? It was a long list, but do you want to maybe just address some of those?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we're, we're trying to look at a layer approach and something that we can implement quickly and improve safety quickly. I, I think, you know, we've, we've been working hard with AT&amp;T for, for several months now to, to bring at least cellular service to Mount Bald Head. And as you discussed at your last meeting, the, you know, there's, you know, there's significant approvals that we still have to, to work through, through the State Historic Preservation Office. And so that, that process is taking just, you know, a lengthy period of time. So this is a, a quick solution. I think this is a solution that's been tested all around the world in both urban and rural environments and found to be quite successful. It brings in a new source instead of using an existing source of, of internet and logging down anything that, right now that may not have necessarily the capacity for additional users. This brings in a, a new source through Starlink's satellites. I, I think, you know, the existing phone lines there are coax and, and, you know, as I indicated with the, you know, the, you know, the service towers that like they put in at Grand Haven State Park, when those towers are quite, you know, if you take $570,000 divided by 12, we're talking quite a bit for, you know, even just, you know, one of those towers to, and then you're looking at the fact that somebody still has to run a pretty significant distance to a tower to try to reach help. And then, you know, if you're at the ability to at least make a Wi-Fi call at this point and you can be right there on scene and talk to a dispatcher and be relaying real-time information about the condition of a patient or what they're seeing, you know, with somebody that's struggling in the water or something like that versus running away from a scene and touching a call box and trying to communicate. I, I think those things have their place and I think that it can be layered. I just think that this is probably a, you know, a product that is quick to deploy. I mean, Metro Wireless has a very, they, they need to make this product work. Otherwise, you know, they know that that's going to be an issue. So, you know, we've, we have changed some of the agreement language to, you know, which typically with these telecommunications agreements, they typically favor them. And so our attorneys worked hard to actually modify some of this language so that, you know, the product isn't performing as it's supposed to, that we also have some, some leeway to, to address that. But I'm quite confident that they want to make sure that they're providing a product that works. So frankly, they, they would like to help provide additional solutions throughout the city. I think this is a good first step. It's not foolproof, right? Nothing's 100% always until you try it. But I think with the cost of entry here and the cost per month, especially with what we're charging with Oval Beach fees, it will more than cover the cost. And I, I think from a staff perspective, it's worth giving it a shot. And I think we're hearing that from our public safety as well. And, and let's try it. That's my perspective.
Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm pleased that this service can be deployed within three or four weeks. I, I know that the Fire Department and Sheriff's Office were supportive of this technology. The technology is being used in a war zone right now. It's quite robust. It does a lot more than a old-fashioned landline would do. Given that we've lost one of the access roads to the beach, I think public safety is more important than ever for us to have another way of communicating, potentially for the DPW staff and our first responders to have the ability to stream video of what's going on at the beach. I think that could be powerful. So I'm going to be yes on this.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Please, Gregory.
Go ahead, Gregory.
We've been waiting a long time for to have some kind of connection out there, right? We've been talking about AT&amp;T for a long time. And, you know, I want to thank the CVB for that $15,000. That was something that I wanted to see. And I also want to thank them, you know, they might have not have agreed, you know, we had Lisa come out and talk about our SCR position. They might not have agreed with that, but it's great to see them still engaged with the community and willing to make things better around here. And, and that $15,000, I think, I think was really what helped me say yes to this. And I, I really do appreciate that. Again, we've been waiting this for a long time. It's a low cost for what we're getting. We've already had approved, approval from like, like Scott Dean said, we had approval from both the Fire Department and the Police Department. I just think it's an easy fix. You got my yes.
I, I'd echo those comments. Also, it's just really low stakes, right? They're going to get it implemented in three to four weeks.
Right.
The hardware has been subsidized and we're talking about $678 a month for a maximum of three years. And, and, and again, it's operating in Ukraine right now in a war zone. Starlink, it's, it's tested and proven. And I think that it's just, it's really high time for this. I'm emphatic yes on this.
The only thing I'll add is we're all trained to reach for our cell phones. And I mean, back in the day, some of us remember landlines and would go, you know, travel to get a, a phone. But I think it would just be hard to retrain people who are so glued to their phones. So I'm supportive as well.
And Ryan, will there be signage to help people as far as enabling their cell phones? I mean, obviously staff will have their phones enabled, so they'll be able to make those quick emergency calls. But will there be signage to help people?
Yeah. And I think there is an educational component here, yes, that I think through signage or maybe some slips that we hand out as folks are coming into the beach to explain to them how to, or that they need to have Wi-Fi enable calling for this to work, that it's not quite like as simple as cellular where you'd be able to just dial and go. I mean, you do, if you have Wi-Fi enabling, it is that simple. But that's what we do. We do some education. You are correct, Mayor.
Okay. Any other? Go ahead, Logan.
I share the concern over safety at Oval Beach. I also share Councilman Gardner's concerns over the ability of us, or us as a group, to have a strategy about our communications as a whole out there. I definitely think that this will help. I think that's pretty clear. I'm also confident that this isn't going to be as effective for safety necessarily as we seem to sound like we're hopeful about. It's Wi-Fi calling. Not all phones have that. A lot of people don't connect to the Wi-Fi when they come to the beach, kind of as a, as an intention. So you have to connect to Wi-Fi first, then you have to make sure your Wi-Fi comes on. And then you have to get through and you have to be in range of the router. It's, it's not a guaranteed solution that that's going to help in an emergency. We're also talking about AT&amp;T being available at the beach. But again, that's not going to help everybody at the beach in the case of an emergency. So I think that this discussion, this is a great step forward. What I would like to see is, again, us have some sort of, lay this out on a map, sort of like a diagram, and who's covered in what situations, what options are there for us to have safety service? And I honestly, I'm like a younger guy, but a landline is, is, I still know what a phone looks like. And, you know, people's phones die. You know, having, having some landlines strung along the beach seems like another way to provide some coverage to people who phones dead, aren't connected to Wi-Fi, don't know how to do Wi-Fi calling, you know, all of that sort of stuff. So I think that's, this is a piece to that solution. And again, grateful to the CVB for the support out there. But I support this in the context of a larger communication strategy out of Oval Beach. So I'd like to share Councilman Gardner's call for that.
Any other comments? Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to piggyback on that and that, that Russ has asked for several times. And I think it, we might want to think about that when we have our next strategic meeting. It's really having a discussion about technology, you know, and, you know, maybe fiber optics or a, a bigger picture, you know, of what we're doing. And, and rather than, it seems like we're trying to piece it together because this thing with AT&amp;T that we hoped for, just it's not happening quick enough. And now we're finding this little thing here. But if we had an overall strategy like Alleghan, the city of Alleghan did and implemented, that might be something worth talking about.
I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with taking a deeper dive on this topic at some point. But we also had to be mindful that, you know, technology is moving so quickly that sometimes we have to sort of build it while we fly it, if you will. And, you know, from a safety standpoint, if I hear the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Office are supportive, that's good enough for me.
Right.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would just add that this is also an opportunity, I think, I don't think I know, for collaboration with our sister communities. They have issues with wireless coverage as well and Wi-Fi broadband, everything you name it. They're suffering from the same things that we suffer from, overload in the summer, et cetera. I believe that's an ideal opportunity for us to get in an initiative together with the township and with the Village of Douglas to talk together about what the solutions might look like. And back to, the point I'm trying to make is that my experience has been on projects like this at city, at the city council level, is that we have a solution dropped on us and then I have questions about what the alternatives are. And I'd much rather prefer to have that we have discussions regarding, okay, what's the problem we're trying to solve? Beach safety, being able to have people be able to make a call out to emergency services at the beach. There's multiple solutions to that. This is one. And what I'd like to see us do is do a better job at bringing alternatives to the table so we can make a more informed decision on these going forward. And ultimately, I do want to make sure the community understands I am not anti-safety. I am not anti-safety. And sometimes I get portrayed as being the anti-safety guy because I ask questions. I just want to make the most informed decision and the best solution for our community.
You know, just to build on Councilman Gardner's point about sort of a more holistic and a broader telecommunications strategy. You're actually right. Infrastructure, like, you know, pipes and things like that, you know, usually kind of stay within a city's boundaries. Telecommunication, telecommunications signals go well outside of our boundaries and go into other places. So really, this is probably an opportunity for us to work with the county on this. I think we had Jill Dunham in a role of broadband coordinator. I think that's, I think she's left that role, but really this might be one for the city of Sagatuck to work this issue at a county level with Douglas and the township as opposed to trying to build our own. So I think when we do this, we should probably do it in a way that's mindful that radio waves don't stop at our boundaries as a city. So we should probably take it up even higher than, than, than the city level.
All right. Anyone else? All right. This is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We are moving on to item 15C, Ordinance Number 240826A, zoning ordinance amendment to impose maximum limits on the number of short-term rentals in specific zoning districts. Establish the effect of such limits on existing licenses and establish how available licenses will be issued to protect the public health, safety and welfare.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion. Motion to approve Ordinance Number 240826A to amend the city of Sagatuck zoning ordinance to impose maximum limits on the number of short-term rental licenses in specific zoning districts. Establish the effect of such limits on existing licenses and establish how available licenses will be issued to protect the public health, safety and welfare.
We have a second.
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments? Yes.
And if I could have our lawyer here and just wanted to ask a couple of questions here, you know, because of course I've got questions here at the beginning of the meeting. I just want to clarify, I don't recall any kind of conversation with somebody other than I say hi and goodbye to. I don't get into in a lot of in-depth conversations with certain individual because we've had incidences where I've been bullied several times by him. And I will say that, document it. But you came to me at a time when we were talking about short-term rentals and asked me if, if I had a conflict of interest in several other council members. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and now before that, when we had any dis- And, and now before that, when we had any discussion of anything, have I violated anything? Have I been a conflict of interest that I should recuse myself?
There is nothing I'm aware of that would meet that threshold.
Okay, I really appreciate the time in that because I know that I haven't worked at that organization. It was a part-time job, and I hadn't worked at that organization for quite a while now. And most people in town that know me know that I've been stepping back from that position for quite a while. I've spoken to the mayor and other votes in saying that that wasn't really something that, it was a career of mine or anything like that. So I just wanted to clarify that I shouldn't have to recuse myself because I'm legal to make a decision here.
Yeah, yeah, we were made aware of the situation. We discussed it, and yeah, your previous employment is not a current disqualifying conflict of interest.
Thank you very much.
And on that note, do you want to go into any other details about council member?
About that, yeah.
About, I'm sorry.
Councilmember White.
Yes, I was curious if you could.
Yeah, so our office, our office's opinion is that you are still disqualified for participating in deliberation and voting on this matter. So the charter and other city policies and rules provide that a council member shall not vote on any issue or matter in which they have a conflict of interest. The situation that I was talking about with respect to council member Muncy before, there is state law authority out there that says if you have a conflict of interest that is resolved prior to a issue or matter being taken up by the council, then it's not disqualifying. I think the difference between that situation and your present situation and to, I guess, just to be clear, you submitted an application for a short-term rental license and recused yourself on the basis of a conflict of interest in discussing and voting on this matter. There's no authority under the city charter or under state law for a conflict to be resolved halfway through deliberating and voting on a issue or matter. And so because our office takes conflicts of interest very seriously, and there's no authority saying that a conflict can be resolved halfway through, it's, it's just basically if a conflict arises at the time the, the matter is taken up, you have to recuse yourself. That, that remains our office's position.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions as far as the ordinance is concerned?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll make a few remarks and frankly.
Thank you.
I have a question for.
You still have more for Jake?
Yes, please.
Okay, sorry, Scott, I will.
Yeah, I wasn't going to discuss this, but because I was one of the three people that was investigated unbeknownst to my knowledge until we received a legal opinion in my city email account that I was under investigation for a potential conflict of interest, of which I did not have one. My question to you at the last meeting, and I'll ask again, is why, why the entire council was not investigated for any potential conflict of interest? Why just the three of us?
Well, I guess from, from my perspective, I don't, I don't decide who to investigate. I think the council was.
So you were told who to investigate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I know some people have brought up, because I'm in R2, that I have some sort of conflict of interest. Can you explain, you know, I wanted you to explain that as well, if.
I, I agree. I mean, there are a number of situations that we were made aware of, and we were asked to give an opinion as to.
Everybody's been, you know, like.
Conflict would include the.
Not in this particular situation, all the three of us.
We all publicly stated our positions and demonstrated that we didn't have, if we were asked.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I, we've all publicly acknowledged what we have, you know, going on, and, and our attorneys have, you know, vetted all of us, to be honest, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Holly.
So I'll own up to, I had two different constituents ask me if Gregory or Russ, because you had an ADU, if they had conflicts of interest. And I said, I don't know. And I asked Ryan, who I'm assuming asked our attorneys, it wasn't a, you know, I had a question from a constituent and I passed it on to our staff. So it wasn't a, you know, gotcha, somebody asked me a question and so I passed it.
Yeah, and I was asked as well about.
If anybody asked me if anyone had a conflict.
Yeah, and I, and I asked, you know, whether I was a conflict because I live in R2, and, you know, we've just, we've all, you know, put it out there to let people know where we are with things.
Yeah, you know, at the end of the day, Mayor, I mean, I actually wish we all could vote on this because, you know, watching this council's deliberations over the past few months, I think the outcome is clear in terms of the vote. No one's recusal, I would predict, is going to change the outcome of this, but I would like to make a few remarks. I mean, it's, this has been a long process, and I feel like I owe, owe everybody some, some thoughtful remarks. I've been taking notes for, geez, 18 months. And, you know, I'd like to thank city staff, the planning commission, and the short-term rental task force, you know, who worked on this issue for, for well over a year. I'd also like to thank the public, both city residents and non-residents for participating in the various meetings that we've had on this issue. And, and I would like to apologize to Mr. Barty for attempting to answer his question during public comment that was directed at council member Anderson and myself. I will try to answer your question now. This public participation has influenced my thinking on the issue. I remember the comment that is, that this was only about money. In fact, I think the direct quote during public comment was, it's about money, money, money. I remember the comment that caps will spark the 2008 mortgage crisis in Sagatuck. I remember the comment from those who frankly should know better, that full-time residents and families don't buy homes in my neighborhood anymore. Or that no one will ever renovate the old cottages in our residential district. Or that locals don't take care of their homes and gardens. Do, do you locals agree with that? Are you not taking care of your homes and gardens? Do you agree with that? I don't. So I find these comments to be nothing more than fear mongering and gaslighting because they don't reflect the reality of what I see as a local resident raising a family here. And they don't reflect the call from local voters for zoning action on STRs. And frankly, if one of my neighbors says she feels unsafe, I'm going to do something about that. What we locals see and are looking to maintain are children going to school. We see friends and neighbors taking care of their homes, volunteering in the community, building playgrounds, and supporting local businesses. We see people choosing to move here on a full-time basis and turning tiny cottages into year-round residences. The locals I represent believe more people will move and invest here if we provide certainty around our zoning and demonstrate proper management of our tourist economy. I think the future's bright for Sagatuck. I really do. But we need to better regulate the short-term rental industry. That means caps on tourist rentals in our residential districts. Let me be clear, though. Tourists are not the problem. The root cause of this problem is when elected officials don't manage density through proper zoning and ordinance enforcement. The issue's not new or unique to Sagatuck. We all know this. Communities all over the world are responding to this issue through rulemaking designed to manage crowds and density. All you need to do within the past few weeks is search the term over tourism, and you'll find countless examples of caps on everything from short-term rentals to cruise ship visits to ski resort tickets. This is not unusual. A vote yes on this, on this zoning ordinance is just simply good public policy, you know, and as a council. We've taken many votes to address other aspects of this important issue, but tonight's vote will likely be the one that is remembered in the history of our city. It will also be the one remembered by the voters. I'm confident this measure will pass. It was brought to us by a majority of our planning commission, and I'm asking every one of you at this table, and Logan, I wish you could participate, I'm asking every one of you at this table to join me in a yes vote so we can put the issue to rest and move forward as a community. In closing, I look forward to sharing my thoughts on the path forward with Sagatuck's voters at the League of Women Voters Forum at the high school on September 17th. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Gregory.
You know, we can tell how much passion everybody has for this, can't we? And it's a very divisive issue. Got to tell you something, it hasn't been easy for me to try to listen to what most people want. And that's exactly what I've been trying to do. We don't always agree on everything, but, but I certainly do, do my hardest, you know, to listen to whatever would. And again, it's been such a divisive issue, so it's really hard to tell, you know, if it's half and half. And the only thing I really want to say right now is that I wish I could recuse myself. I wish that all of us here at the council could recuse ourselves and make it a valid issue. Because I have really struggled hard to listen to what most people want. And a lot of you folks, I, I'm looking at everybody in the audience, I talk to most of you almost every single day. I talk to everybody in front of my home almost every single day. And it's very 50/50. We are very divisive about this. It's hard to tell who wants this and who wants that. So I'm, I'm doing my best to serve, and I appreciate, I appreciate all of my supporters, everybody here, everybody out in our town, as well as our tourists as well. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
I would just emphasize that, you know, we were elected by the people of Sagatuck, the voters of Sagatuck, the residents of Sagatuck, and they entrusted us to represent them in what's a representative form of government. And that means at this table, we have to make tough decisions, and we have to make courageous decisions, and they may not make everybody happy. But that's the job when you're looking to sustain the small-town charm of this community and to make sure this town continues to prosper well beyond the time that we're here.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll keep this brief. The, the comment I keep hearing about, I was, I was voted in by the constituents is absolutely true, but I was voted by the constituents to represent the entire community, and that means entrusting me with the interests of the business owners, of our visitors, and our residents. And that's the way that I've always looked at being voted into office, is I'm being voted to represent the entire community. My family's been here since the 1880s. I've since met some families recently that have been here since the 50s and the 30s. Our experiences are all different with this community, but ultimately what it comes down to is the people. The people make this place. It's not the number of short-term rentals, it's not the number of businesses, it's the attitude that we take towards the people that enjoy our community. When they come and live here, we welcome them. When they come and visit with us, we welcome them. That's what I do. That's what I try to do every time when we have a, I have a short-term rental right next door to me, and two times now, there have been people that have stayed there. One had recently bought a house and are moving here full-time in town because of their experience. And a recent week-long visit was actually very complimentary and said, we didn't realize how wonderful the people are here. They didn't say the buildings, they didn't say the look, they said the people. And I'm a part of that. So I view my responsibility as being a long-term keeper of the flame of Sagatuck. My dad did it before me on this village council, previously to being a city council. My great-grandmother was a city clerk. My grandmother worked for the Fruit Growers Bank down in the corner where the Mize Rose Garden is. My grandfather was head custodian at Sagatuck High School for a number of years. All of them had an attitude about Sagatuck that were welcoming, were inclusive, we are, we are here to serve our people, but we're also here to serve the people that come and visit to us. And I still believe, in my heart of hearts, is that Sagatuck will survive me, it'll survive my family. I hope to be able to pass on something good to my daughter and to the people that come to visit. I remain opposed to the caps for two reasons. One is I still am not convinced of the problem we're trying to solve. And number two, the more important issue is, I don't understand the full financial impact of a generational decision such as this on my community from a business, from a personal, as well as a visitor standpoint. Without that information, I cannot support legislation like this.
Okay. Anyone else?
And I'm going to repeat it, that without an economic impact study, you know, specifically for our town, which is unique, I just can't, I can't pass it. I believe in regulation. I wouldn't have a problem with caps. I think 20% was a little too strong. If, if we would have gone back and we would have said, you know, a different number, maybe I would have thought differently. But again, to me, an economic impact study probably would have won me over.
Madam Mayor, and I wasn't going to comment because I feel like we've all heard the same arguments over and over, but just, just to reiterate, if, if anyone's really doing their homework up and down the lake shore, 20% is very generous number. Communities are going to 4% and 5% all day long, or imposing it across the city, or banning them completely in residential districts. So I just want to reiterate that, that when I come to 20%, I think of it as a gentle compromise. And the R1, low density residential district, it is a very light touch, a gentle compromise. And, and I'm grateful for us to be here today and, and hopefully able to pass this, and I'm in favor of it.
And I just, I just want to be on.
If I could have a new person joining in on the conversation.
Yeah, I'll keep it short. We're really looking at dialing back short-term rentals citywide, about 12% back to where we were two years ago. This is a very reasonable approach when you look at how other, how communities deal with short-term rentals. It's really looking at balance. We know how important tourists are, and Russ, I love it, how warm and welcoming you are to your neighbors and short-term rental people. That is what Sagatuck is. And I think every one of us around this table and everybody in the room, that's the kind of people we are because we live here. I think what people who support the cap are looking for is just to have more of us as neighbors, because we've lost, overall, we're currently, we've lost about a third of our city's housing to short-term rentals, and on the hill, it's at 39% now. And so we just want neighbors in the neighborhoods.
Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. I make two commitments when I come to this table. The first commitment I made was to the US Constitution when Jamie swore me in. The second one is to the voters, full stop.
The only thing I would like to add, if I may, I just appreciate staff and the tireless work that Ryan Cummins put into this. You know, we've had countless meetings and between the task force and the planning commission meetings and the public hearings and, you know, the town halls that we had at the high school, this has been, we've had a lot of input on this. I appreciate our attorneys drafting this and everything that went into it, and also the compromise. When we heard from our constituents that, that the ADU issue, I thought that was a good compromise to say, hey, if you have an ADU, that won't be part of the cap, because I know a lot of people in town might need an ADU to be able to pay taxes and just to make that extra income. And it makes sense to have someone who owns their home be in charge of what's happening in their backyard. So I thought that was a good compromise. 20% in our residential areas and not our whole town, I also thought that was a good compromise. I know in a lot of communities, they absolutely don't allow short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. Obviously, Sagatuck is different because the hill is so close to downtown. I thought we reached a really great compromise, and I, I feel confident that we did the right thing.
I just want to say I'm proud to serve on a board that doesn't always agree on everything all the time. And it's nice to have different opinions on our board. I think that if everybody was on the same page all the time, it'd be kind of scary to our constituents. So it's nice to have a little difference of opinion, and I don't think it's a rule-breaker. I don't think it's a, I don't think, you know, who you're going to vote for, this or that, or, you know, we are all here to serve on a lot of issues here in our town. We've all helped to make great things happen in our town over the years, even before we served on council, you know, Lauren and a lot of us that have lived here over the years. We've done a lot to serve our community. And there's a lot more than just this subject, is why we appreciate the support from our city and everybody else.
I think that's a good note to leave it on. If, Jamie, could you please call the roll?
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Muncy?
No.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right, we all move on to item 15D. This is the short-term rental licensing ordinance amendment to impose maximum limits on the number of short-term rentals in specific zoning districts. Establish the effect of such limits on existing licenses and establish how available licenses will be issued to protect the public health, safety, and welfare.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance, ordinance number 240826-B to amend the city of Sagatuck short-term rental licensing ordinance, ordinance number 240229-B to impose maximum limits on the number of short-term rental licenses in specific zoning districts. Establish the effect of such limits on existing licenses and establish how available licenses will be issued to protect the public health, safety, and welfare.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this item? Okay, well, this is also a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Muncie?
No.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right, moving on to item fifteen E, Short-Term Rental License Notification and Issuance Policy. It's on page one oh three.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Short-Term Rental License Notification and Issuance, Issuance Policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um, I've had a number of, even though I'm opposed to the legislation, I do feel it's important for this council to pass ordinances that are as well-written and cover as many issues as possibly can be known at the time that we adopt them. I've had a number of questions from people in the community, uh, generational homes, people that own short-term rentals, people that live here and own a short-term rental. And the questions I've had, uh, are around, uh, it was brought up by someone that may comment today, is if a license is revoked, what is the process to appeal that decision? Two is I've also had questions regarding the um, generational homes. If a home passes ownership without a family, what is going to be the process by which they'll be allowed to keep that short-term rental certificate? Three is also around the lottery system. And um, I'd like to, uh, I know that some of this kind of has to play itself out as we get experience with it. But I think the ordinances are setting us up for certainly some lawsuits. And, and um, I think that we are missing an opportunity to get this exactly right. And the urgency and the rush to get this in, I don't feel that urgency in the community. The regulations that were passed back in March, I believe, are maybe beginning to take effect. We haven't seen much data yet there. Um, and that's a whole nother discussion regarding the reduction of short-term rentals in the community. It's going to put a tax burden or put a financial burden on citizens in town to pay for granite services going forward. That's part of the economic impact I'd like to better understand. So I just want to put that out there that I think we are putting ourselves at risk with this legislation because there are some holes in this from people that have asked me questions and my, and my reading of it.
All right, uh, anyone, do you want to address any of that or?
Well, I mean, I mean, just to say, I mean, I, you know, our staff perspective and certainly your, your legal counsel drafted these documents. And um, you know, we've, we've reviewed them and had a lot of discussions about them. And uh, you know, I, uh, you know, we tried to uh, write them up in a way that makes them defensible. And of course, with the case law that's out there and what the courts have said about short-term rentals and how it should be handled. Uh, I think there was some discussion at your workshop meeting as it related to, you know, how future licenses should be issued and whether or not a merit-based program was, was better. And I think that that is going to make your uh, process more likely to be challenged than a lottery system would. And I think this lottery system, um, is probably, um, you know, is, is quite, uh, defensible. Um, as it relates to concerns with, with transfer of licenses, um, uh, that, that came up at your workshop as well. If the council desires to kind of take up a, a change in language to your short-term rental ordinance to change like what actually constitutes a transfer and when, when licenses would transfer and certain, um, you know, family-type situations as you discussed, then certainly you have the right to take that up and make some modifications there. Um, as it relates to uh, revocation of short-term rental licenses, there is a, a process that, that right now involves coming before the, the city council. Uh, and I assume that there's a disagreement on that. Frankly, there's a, a process to go to, you know, somebody could choose to file a suit in the circuit court similar to where they, they could in another way right now.
Yeah, there, there, there's notice and an opportunity to be heard, um, before a license is suspended or, or revoked. It would come before the council for a hearing and then the council would render a decision. Um, and to your question, I mean, that's, that's not, there's no, there's nowhere to appeal it internally within the city from there. But there is a, like, the process there.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote as well.
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Muncie?
No.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, all right, we will move on to public comment on
Uh, uh, PPW.
Judy Thiel.
Oh.
We moved off the consent.
Thank, thank you. Okay, so sorry. Got away from me and thank you for pointing that out. Um, okay, so this will be item fifteen F, uh, the appointment of Judy Thiel to Parks and Public Works Committee.
Mayor, I'll ma, I'll make a motion to appoint Judy Thiel to the Parks and Public Works Committee with a term ending August first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, the reason I asked to have this put on the regular agenda is I had asked previously that all committee appointments be put on the regular agenda, not consent agenda. I think it, it's important that we have an opportunity to discuss it, uh, not just at a workshop, which this wasn't discussed at the workshop, but that was, that's the primary reason. So my question around this is more a process. Um, I believe we're opening, I believe we're filling Ruth Johnson's spot. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um, and my question though is why wasn't the candidate's application supplemental information included in the packet? That's very usual. We typically see that in the packet for us to review so we can better understand the candidate. I trust the process, process was followed. But I'd like to know more about the, about the applicants when they apply.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to go into that with you.
So, so that information is typically included in the council packet. Uh, question is, when did, uh, and I don't know Judy, when did she submit her application for the?
Um, Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, so uh, as it relates to, yeah, her application not being in the packet, I, I apologize. That's uh, that's on staff that we just missed putting that in on this agenda item. So um, I apologize that that is, you know, normally what we, we do, so.
While he's looking through that, I can just, uh, say I had an opportunity to interview Judy. Uh, she was the only applicant. Uh, she works for Ford Motor Company. Um, she is a volunteer at the Sagatuck Center for the Arts and has volunteered for a number of different, um, events here in town. Um, she's really excited to be a part of, uh, the Parks and Public Works Committee. Um, Helen was involved with the process as the head of the Parks and Public Works Committee. And um, I thought she was a great interview and she seemed really enthusiastic and ready to serve.
She's a neighbor. I know her well about her character and that. And I think that she's going to be a great add. And again, we had one position, one applicant, and it was, she applied weeks and weeks ago. That, that position was open for a number of weeks.
So, yeah, so she applied on, on June twenty-fifth and just give you, I mean, it's not a real, uh, you know, lengthy application. So I can quick summarize it here. So you have all the information, uh, as, as the mayor indicated, she works at Ford Motor Company. Her occupation position is a new model programs quality standards. Um, uh, indicated she is a Sagatuck resident. She says, I'm interested in serving the community and helping the Parks and Public Works Committee and continuing the momentum of maintaining, improving the city's parks and green spaces. I have a passion for the beautiful park, beautiful parks and trails here in Sagatuck, uh, uh, and provide, as they provide such value to both residents and visitors. I've served on many committees throughout my career at Ford, including our lunch and learn volunteer training activities, our women in manufacturing charitable, charitable, charitable drives, uh, as well as our new employee mentoring program.
Great, uh, it sounds like a good fit. Again, my question's around the process. And the fact that there was only one applicant for this opening is concerning to me. I think the city needs to do a better job finding people to serve on the boards and commissions. As a matter of fact, this one particularly, um, and I have full disclosure, as my wife, my, my, what my wife Jen said, I didn't know there's a position open on the committee. Well, my wife actually was on a parks advisory committee in the city of Chicago for commercial park district and secured a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for construction at the playground that she was serving on. This weekend, Gregory and I happened to meet a new couple to town with an eight-year-old daughter who recently moved into town. She served on the Wicker Park Advisory Council. Two candidates, and again, this other person that we just met, didn't express interest in this role. But I think we need to find out to make sure that we have applicants and people know that this position is open. I think just posting it and mentioning it in a meeting is not enough. We've got people out there who have skills and have things that they can deliver to us. But sometimes they just don't know that these opportunities exist. So.
Jamie, where all did we list it? Just to, you know, make sure, I mean, we listed it in the email blast. We had it in a number of agendas that it was available. And then council meetings.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Hallie.
I can't resist, Russ. One of the problems we have, one of the, the unintended uh, consequences of short-term rentals is our population is declining. And um, we have fewer people who live here full-time to staff our committee. So. That was, I, I had to.
Anderson, I will counter that by this. Okay, so the fact that there are not enough
A guess.
From, yeah, that's a guess. And my position is, is that there are plenty of people out there that are interested in serving that need to be approached. And we need a more robust recruitment process, in my opinion, because the people are there. I disagree with you is that, yes, we have a declined population, but there are still people in this community that want to serve. And they just need to know, we need to do a better job getting them excited about these roles.
Okay, I'm sure there, there'll be other positions opening very soon, so.
Yeah, I can say, Mayor, like, that nobody has to wait for an opening to apply, that we accept the applications at all times. You can click as many, select as many boards that you're interested in serving on. So like, please, we, we want people to serve. And so I, I, you submit your application, and the next time we have an opening, we're still going to, you know, notify everybody that that specific opening is there. But we will take any applications that were received that, that has an interest and, and use that in the next round of interviews. So I, please, type people.
Yeah, that's helped in the past because we had a bench already going on some of the, um, people that have applied to Planning Commission in different positions. So, um, yeah, at this point, this is a roll call vote as well.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, moving on to public comment. Uh, anyone in the room, feel free to come up.
Yeah, Ethan Barty, uh, five eighty-four Lake Street, property owner and, well, you know. Um, no, I just want to follow up and, um, on Mr. Stryker's, um, comment earlier. Um, and thank everyone here. I thank the Planning Commission. Um, thanks for listening. Um, even though maybe we disagree on things, um, I want to make sure everybody understands that the conversation is good that I've had with many members, um, as well as with the, the Planning Commission, uh, a lot with Steve Mans, really appreciate, um, his time picking up the phone every time, listening, having good conversation. Um, and appreciate everybody's time. We obviously all love this community or we wouldn't, we wouldn't be fighting like this, I guess, you know. I, I don't want to call it fighting. I should say, you know, discussing. So I'm a data-driven person, maybe not as much as Russ, but you know, I think we need more data to look at and see it. Um, you know, I think now we just, we, we close this chapter and, and uh, I look forward to some good constructive conversation um, going forward on how we can, you know, move our town forward. Um, and as things, you know, don't work, um, we fix them. So I just want to make sure, um, I, and you know, want to go on record to say that I want every business in the town to thrive. Um, I would never condone banning any restaurants, throwing that out there. Um, we want this town to thrive, um, and, and everyone to thrive in it. So, um, if, you know, we can agree to disagree, but would love to have conversation. Um, you know, in the weeks, months, years to come. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ethan.
Thanks, Ethan.
A historic night. Uh, thank you for your hard work. Thanks for everybody's comments. It's just great to feel the community really settle this down. Pardon me? Laura Godfrey, Sagatuck.
Thank you.
Um, so it's, it's a relief and it's just great to have this culminate in, I think, the right decision. And I thank you all. And I understand all perspectives. I really do. Um, but I absolutely believe in the future of this town and we are on the right side of it. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Laura.
Anyone else in the audience?
Bobby Gott, three four one Main Street. Yes, thank you all. Um, and I know that we all want the same thing in the final analysis. We want a thriving Sagatuck, as Ethan just said. And um, um, the city will thrive as we all thrive. So, um, I know it hasn't been easy and it's been contentious, but the decision's been made. And I hope we can get to work, back to work in terms of making sure that uh, we're doing everything that each of us can to make sure the city continues to grow and flourish. And finally, I want to thank the City of Sagatuck. Um, I was part of the press conference last week at Oval Beach where we hosted Representatives Hood and Andrews. And thank you for your gracious hospitality. Uh, the weather cooperated, of course, but it was a wonderful day. And it was because, uh, you were so gracious. So thank you all.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thanks, Beth.
Eight four one Holland Street, Severn Newiki. Um, thank you very much. That was very emotional. I, I, I know there was lots of tension between, between all of you and this, in this direction, different direction, lots of emotions. And I know you're probably relieved that this issue is gone for many, many months, hopefully. Uh, and I hope that, uh, I mean, I spoke in front of you a few times and I hope I never offended you by my, by my oppositions to some of your ideas. This is nothing personal. Again, we live here. We, we may have different ideas about the town. So I hope we can all stay civil and say hi to each other when we see each other shopping or visit our businesses. I don't want to feel weird when I go and have a drink at your place or and I don't want to feel like I have to avoid your place either, you know. And it's, it's a very small town, so it's really hard to avoid your enemies. So I don't think, I really don't think you can, you can Right, you can't avoid us. I don't want to, I don't want to feel weird in this toxic environment. I really don't. Um, so that was my, my main point. The second point was in regarding to Mr. White, and I hope I can get some clarification from the city lawyer. Uh, I know it was, it was your colleague last time, um, when we, when you guys had the meeting, there was the statement that he made and I will quote, and I hopefully you can, you can, you can, uh, say what you, what you think about that. His quote was that the only reason we flagged, it is, that's in regards to your, to your, uh, person. The only reason we flagged it is because of the cap issue and trying to get application felt to extent that the cap could impact an impact as it relates to that application. So I guess my question is to you, because I did try to contact multiple city councils, none of them could really explain the issue of that. What's the actual conflict of interest in his situation? Because in my understanding, no ordinance were passed right by now. So, and even if we are passing something tonight, his application was filed weeks ago. That decision tonight is not going to affect his application filed weeks ago, which is approved, by the way. So how this, this vote tonight on cap is directly going against his application, where his application is not part of the cap because it already happened in the past and we are right now here. You know what I mean? Like, the city was accepting all that. Till, till this day, the city has been, uh, 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 um, accepting applications, right? That's my understanding.
Yeah, what, um, we want to permit Jake to explain this or would you all be okay if he just maybe sent an email to spend and kind of explain it?
That's very important because I want to make sure that we understand the issue.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk with Severn Ab for the meeting and help answer any questions that you might have.
Does that satisfy you? All right, and we, we want to answer that for you. We do. Okay, okay. All right.
Julie Anadi, seven twelve Alleghan. Uh, last year, I was told by a sitting member of the council that no one in this city was interested in having another poll, a monopole, put on the dune. And that actually AT&amp;T was the only company offering an opportunity to pursue self, cell service. So this didn't sit right with me, so I started nosing around. To date, I have not been able to uncover any correspondence from the city to cell providers that would might offer any options to improving our service. So now I am making a formal request of Ryan that if indeed these do exist, copy should be presented to each of the council members no later than the second meeting in December. Now, I was watching the last workshop and something came out. So if you have mobile, T-Mobile, Verizon, Mint, et cetera, you will not enjoy any improved services. Is this not alone more a reason to discuss a monopole? And I kept on hearing that we can't ruffle AT&amp;T's feathers. Why? If they have spent money on surveys and engineering, on whose authority were they acting on? I'm sure they just didn't come up with this idea by themselves and say, we're going to improve Sagatuck cell service. After investigating what's found, if you found that someone on their own, without acting on the advice and consent of the city council, authorized this on their own, they should be asked to resign. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Grant Lubbers, uh, Manlius Township. So I am coming before you tonight as a new face, new person. So I actually live like ten miles east of here in Manlius Township. But I am running to fill the vacant seat in January for our fallen commissioner, Dean Cappingda. So, and this was my plan as I had discussed with him previously, to do this for years when he was done. But since he recently passed, this kind of brought up my timetable. So a little bit about me, I'm a farmer, I have a wife, two kids, two eleven-year-old twins. brought up my timetable. So a little bit about me, I'm a farmer, my wife, two kids, two eleven year old twins, started school Wednesday. So I have been involved with Michigan Framberio for the last eighteen years in various organizational committees on the county board, state committees, this and that. And also I've been involved with the county emergency management team and the groundwater work study group for the last year and a half. So, but a little bit about me and I was enjoying your meeting, you know, different issues, different areas, right? I mean, I live in the vicinity, so I hear mutterings of what goes on, you know, or what doesn't go on here, but it's interesting to hear the politics of it. But as commissioner, I would promise I will be, I'll take any concerns you have from the constituents of Sagittuck back to the commission and discuss them thoroughly for the best interest of the county. And report back to you on a, you know, proper basis to your needs. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you for being here tonight.
Wanted young Sagittuck township. I was saddened, as I'm sure many of you were, with the death of Dean Cappinga. He was a great commissioner, served our community well, gave us updates and we really appreciate that and want to replace him with somebody that will do the same. I want to thank Mr. Lubbers for agreeing to run. And what I'm about to say has nothing to do with Mr. Lubbers. I am on the board of canvassers for Alleghan County, two Democrats, two Republicans that canvassed all of the precincts and certified the election. So I was in Alleghan County offices six days after the primary and we finally certified the election a week ago today. Since Mr. Cappinga died the day before the primary, we could not canvas his votes, which means we could not count them. When somebody's votes aren't counted, they are not nominated to go on to the general election. So this brings up a legal question. And our clerk, county clerk Bob Janetski, was informed, from what I hear, from many different legal sources that he should appoint write-ins to run, or not appoint, excuse me, allow write-in candidates to run in the general election. Any Republican, any Democrat that wants to do that. There is a state law that says if a nominee dies before the election, their state party, which in this case would be Republicans, can appoint somebody to the ballot. That's if somebody was nominated. Dean was not nominated because he died the day before the primary election. So Clerk Janetski should have never accepted allowing Mr. Lubbers' name to go on the ballot in November. He, a matter of fact, as I hear, turned Brad away on Friday because of what he was advised by council. But then when Brad went back today, I, I believe he accepted it, right? So nothing against Mr. Lubbers. That's great. I, I would love to have a fair election in November, but I think we should all be concerned that over the weekend, our clerk ignored state law and was pressured by outside individuals and he changed his mind. So if you would like to weigh in on this with Clerk Janetski, I would urge you to do that. I also want to add that on Thursday, I went with Christie Allen, who ran for county commission in twenty eighteen, and she submitted her declaration of intent to run as a write-in candidate. And we want a fair election where she runs against another write-in candidate. So thank you very much.
All right, Glenn. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Seven forty two Pleasant Street, Sagittuck. I've had four people come to me that said they've applied. And so, Ryan, I'll meet with you because you might have their names, but they said they got, they submitted and they got the thing back that said their application had been accepted. So maybe we can touch base next week and, and see what happened to those names. One of them was for the Parks and Public Works.
Okay. Uh, anyone else in the audience? Okay, all right. Anyone online? I see Gary Medler with your hand raised. If you want to unmute yourself and tell us where you live.
Gary Medler, four sixty one Vine Street in River West. Since the ferry street closing, we've had three power outages. The first week after, there was a line that was knocked down on Lakeshore Drive and that was short-lived. Then we had this over six hour power outage because of the, the truck crash. We had a medical emergency two Sundays ago at the Sagittuck Yacht Club and the ambulance service had a terrible time getting through the barricades and took an enormous time. Now Dan Fox has indicated that they were aware of that issue and have solved it. But still, the ambulance on this past Sunday had an emergency Saturday night and they took the long route. And that was more of a tenuous medical emergency. Two Sat, two Saturdays ago, we had an emergency that we had to deal with and no one from the city, no staff at all was present. The peninsula was shut off for over three hours. You couldn't get in, you couldn't get out. No one contacted anybody. If it wasn't for the people along Park Street, we went up and down to check people. The Kalamazoo Lake had a difficult time connecting the generator to the lift station across from the chain ferry and that blocked the road. The cars were coming out of Oval Beach where with nowhere to go. We ran out of parking spaces around Mount Bald Head. People from the beachway and the, the beach were stacked up deep, trying to get across the river on the chain ferry. But the Trump boat parade blocked the chain ferry and sat there cussing out the poor kids at the chain ferry. So we've had a lot of talk tonight about an emergency and you passed ordinance for the protection of the public's safety and welfare. But no one, no one from the city was there two Saturdays ago when we actually had an emergency. We had six residents that needed emergency delivery of medication and we got runners to go pick it up. We had some residents that were not able to go to the grocery store and we did runs to get them grocery store. You have how many people staying at Oxbow? These are people's kids from Chicago. Did anyone contact them to tell them there was an emergency going on? Did anybody contact the beachway with all of those people? Didn't anybody contact the yacht club and tell them there was a problem? Did anyone contact the investor, short-term rentals that have huge amounts of people? At some point, and I, I preemptively issued comments and suggestions before this started. And you need to sit down and think through how you're going to handle these things, how you're going to coordinate people to help you. Thank you.
Gary, thank you. I see Kathy's hands, hand raised. If you want to unmute yourself, introduce yourself and where you live.
Hi, I'm Kathy Brockington. I live at nine eight nine Singapore Drive. I just want to thank the planning commission members and all of the city council members and the city staff for all of the time and effort and agony that you have all put into the past year is looking at the issues of short-term rentals. We, we do need to do something and we have taken, taken a step and that's great. And I appreciate the people who have differing opinions because we all have to live in the town together. Thank you very much for all of your hard work and thank you for, to the staff for all of your hard work as well. That's all.
All right, Kathy, thank you very much. Anyone else online? I do see Joe. Joe, if you could unmute yourself and tell us your name and where you live.
Joe Cuolo, seven six four Mason Street. Just have a question. Is, you know, I don't know, a year or whatever, can we, I, I'd be interested in knowing, well, if property values through, through these caps and other ordinances of, up ordinances that were passed, if property values actually end up going up or down, tax revenue and new full-time residents. I mean, we've been a lot of conversations around, you know, all these different things that people want or they think that will happen, but I'd actually like to see the data after a reasonable amount of time to see did it work? Did it not work? Does it need to be tweaked? Like, is there a mechanism or is that something of conversation or are you guys just done with it and moving on to the next thing? So that's just something I'd like to see because I am curious. Or I will be at least curious after some time to see if this all panned out. Thank you.
All right, Joe, thank you so much. Anyone else online? Okay, I don't see any hands raised at this time. So we will close public comment. There are a couple of correspondence in our packet. At this time, we do have council comments and I do feel like Logan White, since you haven't had an opportunity to say a lot of things, if you want to start our council comments tonight. Okay, all right. Gregory?
Um, just, uh, just wanted to say that, you know, you and I disagreed a lot, haven't we, you know, during different things, but it doesn't stop me from having a rum punch. And a sign in someone's window or whether they don't have a sign in their window won't stop me from shopping somewhere if I really want what they're selling. Okay, I don't play that game. And anybody that kind of tries to make this more divisive or tries to separate us more isn't doing anything to help the cause of our community. And anybody that, and, and to say that I, and for anyone to think that I would approve of any kind of bullying or wrongdoing to any of our council members is preposterous. I know everybody knows my character here, just like we're in a small town and everybody knows everybody's character here. And so I, I just want to say that. And that, like I said, it doesn't stop me from collaborating and working in our community just because we have different opinions. And, and, and those that continue to try to make this a divisive subject are doing nothing to help it.
Okay, Scott?
Less than two weeks to the Mount Bald Head Challenge. It's a multi-terrain, long-distance endurance event. And I'd like to thank everyone that's been here over the past eighteen months dealing with the short-term rental issues and everybody on the council and the planning commission because it has definitely been a feat of endurance and I thank you all for, for participating.
Okay.
Echo a lot of that and appreciate the staff mostly in legal. Done a lot of work on, on this and I know that it's, it's been a lot. Appreciate the efforts of the planning commission, everybody who's participated, public comment both ways. I'm a big fan of democracy. It is democracy in action. I know sometimes you like the outcome, sometimes you don't like the outcome. Sometimes we compromise and we've, we've had made, made a lot of compromises on these, on these ordinances and it's been a birthing process, but I was happy to participate. And I'm glad for all of your efforts on both sides of this issue. Thank you.
Russ?
Yeah, thank you. I just, again, thanks to the community. Sagittuck will survive this. We survived the human rights ordinance dilemma back in the late nineties when I was mayor. This is far less contentious than that issue was. So for those with some experience, we've lived through worse. Three things that I do want to bring up, one is, these are, I would like to have in the next workshop agenda, a discussion regarding Mount Bald Head and alternatives to installing AT&T antennas inside the Ray Dome. To my point I made at the workshop earlier last week is that it's not a done deal. Shippo may come back and say to AT&T, that's a no-go. The city needs to be discussing what alternatives we have to be able to solve the safety issue at the beach and improve wireless communications too is something I brought up three times that I would also like to have on the agenda is to begin discussing the, the city manager's goals and objectives. That's something I think we've all agreed when we hired Ryan, that, that's something that will be good guidance and good management for the council to provide leadership to him and to have a joint conversation about that, that needs to be on the agenda. And three is something I've asked for five times is considering the concerns raised around potential conflicts of interest, I, I request that the council take up a review and update of our current ethics policy, which hasn't been updated for fourteen plus years. We need to get on that.
Holly?
Yeah, adding my thanks to, to everybody, everybody who's participated in short-term rentals. It's certainly been a challenging and sometimes I know difficult discussion, but I think it's been healthy for the most part. And I, I really appreciate people who I don't agree with and do agree with and everyone in between. So thank you. And especially to staff, staff, Jake. And then shout out to Lisa Mize, if she's still on for the sidewalk. It looks great. I love it. And for getting CVB funding for the wireless at Oval Beach.
Okay, at this point, I would, yes.
May I plug an event?
Yeah, do it.
Sorry, I almost forgot to mention the third annual Sagittuck Film Fest is coming up on the fourteenth. And it is, it is really exciting. We are picking up a ton of momentum. Our submissions more than doubled over this, this most recent year. So it's made the quality of the content that we're showing just that much better. It's going to be really exciting. It's all day down at the Women's Club downtown Sagittuck. It is, we've moved it up into September this year to kind of increase the ability for people to walk around. We're having it in November. But it's going to be a lot of fun. Tickets just went on sale. So if you're into film, if you're into art, if you like to support the arts, come out, we're, we're doing some fun stuff down there.
Great.
And if I can real quick.
Get it.
Hey, you know, September thirteenth, Liz Wilson, I had a nice conversation with her. They're getting ready to have community night between four and six thirty at the softball field Friday night for the, for the high school and for the sports team. All the money earned, of course, will be going to our sports programs there. You'll be able to have the chance to dunk the doctor, our, our, our principal and, and he'll be in the dunk tank, dank as well as other high school officials. She's asked for a bubble blower, so I'll probably be there as well. And she'll be on our show, which I'm stepping down from until our election. She, Liz Wilson will be on our show next week on ninety-two seven The Van from seven. And she'll be on probably between seven and seven thirty to give everybody the details about community night at Sagittuck High School.
Great. All right. At this point, I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Adjourn.